We'll get started here. Plan and Board, February 27th. We've got a call. We have to do a quick public hearing for cleanup. Was this just because it wasn't notified long enough or something?
It was improperly advertised. The newspaper failed to advertise it.
Okay, so, all right. The Plan and Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 51, Section 81-Q on Wednesday, February 27th, 2019. At 7:30 PM in the Town Hall, 663 Main Street, Bolton, Massachusetts, to amend the town of Bolton's Common Driveway Rules and Regs entitled Bolton Plan and Board, Rules and Regs for the Application of Special Apartments under Bylaw, 2.4.1.2, Common Driveways Serving 3 to 5 Houses. So I guess we're just need a motion? Well, actually.
So I did make another edit. I'm going to be operating, so I'll get it again. And this, basically, the edits that I made fall in line with the edits that we're making to the Common Driveway Bylaw about environmental impacts and then, you know, having to meet the Massachusetts Water and Protection Act and the Bolton-Bolton Bylaw.
Do we have the final within the limit of work area and the other?
I think we did. I thought we added that.
Did we add that?
You did add that.
Yeah. This is the exact same language as the Bylaw.
Yeah, so I remember us talking about it.
Yep.
That says, "Anyone hear the change?"
I think that's it, yeah.
Okay. Fine, by any? Okay. Now, will we accept the changes to the...
Well, we have to close the hearing.
Close it?
Yeah.
Can we move to close the hearing?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Now, will we accept the changes to the Common Driveway Rules and Regs?
What's that?
On favor?
Aye.
All right. So, uh...
Hi, Chris. There you are.
Hey.
Yeah, you. All right. Didn't recognize you with your disguise, your hat.
Yeah. How you guys doing?
Good.
Let me make this clear. It's just me tonight. I had to slip something in these drinks. All right. Couple things I brought, schedule. It's kind of got some larger windows in there, but it finishes in September. Some of which are due to weather. Others are... I want to get you to feedback from you guys, like, our meeting for the street trees and whatever, so we'll figure that part out maybe. The other thing I brought was qualifications for the Presleywood Town, which I gave to Erica right before. She said they'll have it done hopefully by the end of March, best we can do. So if he was talking to 60 or 90 days, maybe by the end of March. I don't have a copy with me because I think it is my copy. He did some work for Nikki Andy's brother, Andy, way up in the Bay. This was... I took that out as a copy of a phrase I did, but to give you an idea, this was one phrase I did for some of the others, so it's not going to be a great little write-up, but we'll be thorough at best. I guess I don't know which order you guys want to go in. I have a couple things I want to talk to you about. Possibly the streetlights, how we have to go about talking about what we need, some of those, or what town's feeling is on that. If that has to get pushed to another meeting, it's fine. I just like to know, so...
I don't think we can vote on anything.
And then, the schedule. And that's pretty much... Oh, the terminus. I mean, you guys are on board. We get our turn to write up the easement language, town council agrees with it, leave it as is.
Instead of turning later, back and forth?
That's where we're at.
Yeah, that's fine.
I've been talking on the paper, so I need to kind of like tell them what we're doing there.
You also have to get the residents on board, right?
Well, they'll have to agree to the easement.
And then the language on how we're going to take it and fix it. That's what Erica and I were talking about earlier, so...
Yeah, what's the easement, what's the agreement at that point? Are we going to fix their yards or...
And what did we decide for, like, at the termination points? Are going to be a barrier, rocks, fence, something that stops?
I think it would be as is, but we... Oh, you mean where the pavement ends?
Yeah, where the pavement ends.
Open suggestions.
I thought it was supposed to be some sort of fence or some sort of barrier.
I mean, we need something there, right? So people won't drive through.
The last we had talked about was putting some sort of...
Swing gate or something?
Yes, something that a swing gate would be fine, but definitely something...
We're talking where the pavement ends.
Ends. Before you go into three.
Before you go into three.
Not at where one meets Century Mill Road.
No, where the turnaround.
Okay. Okay. Let's just go through the schedule.
Absolutely. So April, mid-April work for you guys for meeting, go over the trees?
No.
Okay.
Well, if you want, I'm in... That's vacation week, so I'm in Florida. You can do it without me, but...
I don't know if I'll be here on there.
I didn't know it was vacation week.
That's okay.
That's why I had a question.
So it's better for you guys a week earlier.
Or a week later?
I'd do it a week, just because of weather. I'd probably do it a week later, just...
I'm on the week before that, so, okay. A week later's good.
I think the...
I can borrow your pen. I have about 100 in my trunk.
So if you want, just bump it to the 24th. That's administrative professionals day, but that would work.
Works for me. I'm there.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, as far as I know.
All right. So that'll kind of change the order in the trees. I have a question. Once we meet there, do you have to come back and have a vote on the trees, or can we just make a decision in the field and order the trees accordingly by the next day?
Remind me again what we are doing in the field with regard to the trees?
There's certain older trees that we're...
Yeah, and you're... We're determining whether they can...
Count as street trees.
And so if they can, then you're...
And the last trees I have to order.
Yeah, so I don't know why we need to come back.
Okay. I just didn't know.
Well, I mean, it's... The plan calls for some shade trees, so if we... Is that like a waiver from the plan or...
Oh, so if we agree, just say hypothetically, there's four trees that we would say could be considered shade trees. There'd be four less that you'd have to order. Is that something that needs to come back to the...
I think the form line there should be a vote, but I don't think that should really hold you up too much. I mean, I think...
It's not like we're going to change our minds.
Right, at the same as the board will basically say yes or no each tree, and then you'll know from that, and then the board will just take a formal vote at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that it does need to be a vote, though, since it's a change to the plan.
Yeah.
But I don't think we're going to pull a fast one on you, so...
All right. So next thing, after we order the trees, we have two charmed cells come out and stake the ADA compliance for the sidewalks in the areas that DPW is concerned about, particularly on Mill Pond Road between mostly lots 49, 50. Those three driveway entrance points are the big concerns. There's one on the side of Circle as well.
Fred, real quick, the trees, how does that impact if we were... Because that's quite the... There's not much lead time.
What, for the meeting?
No, for ordering the trees and getting them installed.
Well, that was just ordering.
That's just ordering.
Yeah, so what's normally the lead time on trees to get them installed? You got it in for 5-1, which is...
I've got two weeks. I've got two weeks of time to install them by the time they're delivered. I don't see that being a problem.
Okay. What does that impact in terms of the overall project of...
It may need additional later, or if...
It impacts us. I mean, we need the excavator on the road to dig them. So anything that could be damaged by the excavator running up in the burb, binder, anything that would... I couldn't put a finished berm in anywhere we're going to do a finished sidewalk or fixing wellment seating until after that's completed.
That's my thought.
But we are talking about May for installation of the trees, and I'm not going to be topping the road until September.
Okay.
So there's...
But his question is about how long do you think it...
To install the trees?
No, to get them. You're going to order them, and how long?
Two weeks.
Okay, so they can turn around.
It'll be enough to fill up a full truck, so it'll be coming out probably Virginia, Connecticut.
Okay.
So I doubt that Shemans or I think they're site one now is going to have that many in stock of the specific size and variety, but they'll place an order for us for about two weeks.
Okay.
So I did speak with Brandon. He's going to do the staking for the ADA stuff. Also, they're going to be doing the installation of the bounds, which is one other thing I want to talk to you guys about.
One more question on the ADA. So is that's going to rip up some residence driveways? Are you redoing those driveways or...
We have to pave them. We're going to have to...
You responsible for them, or is that the residents for the driveway portions?
That's us.
That's you?
It's not the residents' responsibility to make that happen.
Okay.
The driveway's...
Okay.
So as they're doing the staking of the ADA, they're doing the stone bounds, they're also going to shoot all the, any non-shock drainage lines in the road where they meet in the manholes and the drains, so that we can submit that to Fred Hamway. He can review it. Everything that has to be dug up or fixed, we have plenty of time to do. That's why we're doing that early on. Shouldn't be, and GCG shot a lot of it early on. They just have to pull through all the PDFs and stuff that were sent to us and make sure we have them all.
So this is just, you're doing an ASB of the drain line to confirm that it was installed?
Correct, right heights and everything else, so...
Everything's flown down correctly?
Yeah. That way, if there's a change that's been made, it's before we top the road.
I hope not. That's a big change.
I don't think it's going to be a problem. It was all saved and shot when it was done, so...
Right, for the...
A lot of it was before my damage.
For installation of the stone bounds, you... Andy had mentioned possibly trying to get a waiver from having to do the granite or the concrete throughout.
Yes.
Is that still the plan, that you want to do the iron pins? I think, I assume it's just on the open space areas?
I have to look back at his decision and what it says. I didn't have time to pull that, and I know at one point the developers weren't responsible for it, and that sometime around his decision, it was changed to where the developer was, so I have to look through his decision and see what it says. He may not be responsible for the open space.
I'll take a look, too. I thought he was, but I'll...
I don't know. I haven't looked at it a long time. Didn't look at it for that reason. We'll have to look at that. If he is responsible, he is who would like to do iron rods, especially in the open space.
I mean, you have to do it for the road regardless, right?
The stone, yeah.
Then that's... Is that what you were referring to here, was laying out the road?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Let's see. Start installing any missing signage. We lost one or two fire signs along the way at the system and stuff like that. Anything that's missing signage wise, we'll put it at that time.
Okay.
Now, we're going to start installing the street trees in May. I have two weeks allotted for that, first of the 17th. And then, right around the same date, we're going to start de-watering the ponds depending on the water level. And have a long six-week period for cleaning out the bottoms of the ponds and regrading them, because it is kind of a wet time of year, so we'll have to play that by here. But it's why there's six weeks there, so it's not six weeks worth of work, but I had to leave myself some wiggle room. And during that same time, we can do the landscaping, the cul-de-sacs on the modified plant. Erica sent the meeting notes and the plan I had you guys approve back, so we'll take care of that. You know, and we'll install any remaining open space markers. I think there's a couple up on side of Circle that need still be put up on trees. Couple that were put on them are offline. That need be changed. Then we're going to start remediating the binder issues, tearing out the binder at the entrance, micro grinding up at the top from side of Circle to the end of the pavement on Mill Pond. And then, any areas that need to get patched up and/or cut up, patched back, we'll take care of them. And while we're doing that, we'll also, we have a drain pipe that drains onto the road right now, or a perimeter drain. Well, it was drained to drain a backyard, but it'll get pumped into the drainage system, which is how we can take care of driveway drains and everything else.
So wait, explain that to me again, how's that work?
Right now, there's a pipe that came out to a front yard.
Yes.
It continuously drains water onto the roadway over the curb.
Okay.
So we're going to cut it like 15 foot trench.
Yeah.
Pipe it into the catch basin.
All right, so it's all undergrounded, so it's...
Patch it back while we're doing the binder pavement.
Okay.
Gotcha.
That's over someone's driveway right now, you said?
So right now, it's overly, like, there's a pipe literally sticking out?
It's in the front yard, but the water happens to end right on the road, so it's got to hit there. And then, we'll replace the curving as needed after the binder's fixed, because some of those areas, I have to put curving back on top of binder.
And is that... I know when we talked a while ago, there was a lot of curving. It was kind of going back and forth between, oh, she needed to fix some, it didn't. So is that, you say as needed, is that as needed per the DPW, or is that...
DPW said to tear it all out, which we disagree with. We did go around with Fred Hamway and marked up a set of plans, stuff that he felt. We agreed to it.
Okay.
I don't necessarily agree with the fact that it needs to be turned out. It does its job, it keeps the water on the road. May not be 100% aesthetically pleasing, but...
So there's a agreement between you and Fred?
There is.
And so that's the as needed. Is that going to fly with...
Yeah, this was talked, we had that meeting with Joe and Andy, we had talked about that. So basically, I think the board had talked about this at some point, that if there's a disagreement in the field, then we'll come back and then the board will make the call.
Okay.
But Fred agrees with Fred.
Okay, so you guys on the same page then?
Yeah, we're good if Fred and Fred agree.
We're good enough to make this move forward.
Okay.
I don't 100% agree with it, but I also don't want to hold anything up, so...
Okay.
Then after the berm's replaced, we'll do the fixing of wellment and seeding around it, so it has time to take. Flush out the entire drainage system, remove the hay bales, and then we'll top COVID in September.
Okay. Can you seed in July? Does it take in July?
Irrigation on the grass.
So I see water every morning.
Yeah, I was going to say, we definitely have to have a lot of water, but who knows? We could have a rainy summer like this.
Are those areas we're talking about, or are all irrigated?
Okay.
Because there's irrigation in the grass strips.
Okay.
So it will be irrigated, so it'll take.
Do we get an ASB for the entire roadway?
This was merely a construction schedule. It has nothing to do with deeds that have to be signed over the town, has nothing to do with ASBs that have to be shot, any of those things that have to be submitted paperwork-wise, we're not on here.
Okay.
This is merely a construction.
Just the construction that needs to get done.
So I know there's other things that are on that list.
Okay.
I saw when you had it, but this was just construction.
Sure.
This is what I was working on as well.
Okay. No, we had asked for a construction schedule, so this is good.
That's what I did.
Yes, looks good to me.
All right. So we're going to say around on the 24th, is that the day we're talking about for everybody? What day is the week?
The Wednesday?
Wednesday morning, what, for me?
Wednesdays?
Yeah, you want to do like 8:00 AM?
Yeah, mornings.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Thanks for me. I love coffee everywhere. Any other questions for me?
Eric, will you just send us an email?
That's fine. Yeah, I'll be right back.
I'm sure the residents will want to know what happens when you start slipping.
I can pray, I guess. It's the best I can do for this schedule.
I mean, it's a good schedule.
It's a good schedule. I just, you know, I just know...
I didn't schedule anything tight enough where it's going to be a problem, in my opinion.
Okay.
I'm sure you could look through it and tell you absolutely, so...
I mean, it all sounds reasonable. I just know how these things can, you know, you get a rainstorm that starts sliding stuff out and it just snowballs.
It happens.
Yeah. You have to get a wet spring or a rainy summer, and...
Well, it's also a month before, or two months before we can't pave anymore, so...
Yeah, so you've got some...
Yeah. And also, you have two weeks here between removing the... Well, so when's the actual, I mean, the earliest you could actually pave would be...
I need the equipment to remove the hay bales, that's why it's that way.
Okay.
Oh, and you don't want to pave before, yeah, I got you.
Well, all right, of course. Okay. But you could pull the paving up by a couple of weeks.
If everything goes smoothly.
Yeah, okay. And like you said, there's a couple of months there before we shut down paving for the year, so...
All right. Yep.
So what did we say we're doing for curving around the turnaround?
We were going to...
At the end, we were going to leave it.
We were going to look at it during the site visit for the trees.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's Joe's preference if you leave it open at the...
Yeah, and so you could just push it along.
So someone could, yeah.
Is there anything there now?
No.
No.
It just transitions.
Well, and so if someone could drive, like, a fire truck, right, needed to go...
We'd have to remove the boulders on the Century Mill side right now. You cannot get through, because you guys asked us to block it off, or airbreakers and it's a little tricky.
Okay.
So you got to pick one or...
No, that's fine. No, 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 that's...
Okay.
All right. How can we talk about the streetlights and figure out how to make that decision?
So what is it you want to do with the streetlights?
I think whatever ones we can, I guess.
So, we talk about this all the time. I forget if we talked about it with Century Mill or not, but typically, I think police and fire emergency want it at the edge, you know, at the entrance.
At the entrance.
At the entrance. Maybe at an intersection, but...
I think DPW wants it at the intersection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then... But besides that, we don't care. I think that'll eliminate any ones at the end.
At the end, but you felt the residents didn't want the ones at the intersection.
The intersection, I mean.
Intersection, I'm not so sure about, but I know that I've heard the ones at the end of the cul-de-sacs are not favored.
Which I could cut off.
I think it's one of the people outside the development that didn't want it, so...
Well, I mean, as long as they're down, you know, as long as...
They have to be cut off.
Yeah, yeah, so... So I think we've typically been good with the entrance and intersection points.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so what is that, two, three?
Three.
So I think a tad more, we wave them from doing that to turnaround, right?
Yeah, there's no way of doing something other than actual stone bounce for the bounce. There's no way of doing iron pins or any of those, or there are cleated rods.
Okay. This is for the...
For the road. For the road, it's always granite or concrete.
For what, where?
For the roadway.
But it can be concrete instead of granite?
That's, I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Should be in the decision that you're going to be rehearing anyway.
Yeah, I don't...
So we'd have to have a vote on the lights?
So maybe at the next meeting, I can have that to gauge on that weekend.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll vote next meeting for the lights. When is the next meeting?
The second week, week in March. I don't know the exact date.
13th.
Yeah.
I can't be here on the 13th. I'll have to have Andy come.
So...
I'm taking my wife to the airport.
Are you doing, I mean, does it matter if you bump it to the 27th?
Doesn't really matter, right?
I don't think it matters, because I haven't been meeting about the trees until...
Do you want to just pump it to the 27th?
Yeah.
I do need to be here for them.
Actually, the 27th works better, because then you can vote on the trees, and then you can also vote on the lights at the same time.
Oh...
Well, no, we're not doing the tree meeting until April.
Oh, I'm thinking March.
If you guys want to meet earlier than that, I can meet here.
What, are you doing the lights in May?
I think so, yeah.
So you probably need to know what, how...
So what's the lead time?
Yeah, and ordering your...
We'll just vote on it.
Ordering the lights in Miami.
We'll just vote on it in March.
Okay, we'll vote on it, yeah. I don't know that you necessarily need to be present for that vote.
Well, we can do it on the 27th, I can be here.
Yeah. But do you think that leaves you enough time to order them?
I'm sure it does. Figure it out. And that's not something that gets any other work, so not really, if it pushes off by a few weeks, the report's...
Do we want to talk about the appraiser?
Sure.
Seems professional to me.
How do you even...
There's a lot of, like, you know, buildings, industrial buildings.
Yeah, so you guys disagreed with the appraisal that we had, and what was that? That was based on the fact that you aren't able to sell Phase 1?
Two things. When the appraiser was out on sick, and I drove her out there, because she couldn't get out there in her car, and she had to take my trucks. She said it was going to be, you know, her was cents per square foot, and so it was going to come out to 47 grand for the lot. Appraisal came in at 130, like, weeks ago.
Well, in fairness, she had done the research, yeah.
That's fine.
That was just a mere comment, because I was there as well.
But also, her road cost she used in her construction is not...
You don't, yeah, I could understand if you wanted to agree with that, but... You don't, yeah, I can understand if you wanna agree with that, but.
With that phase of roads gonna cost. Also, there's other factors, as in a town received an unapproved lot and you don't know how long you have to hold it till the road is done. That all factors into the value of that lot, because what is good is a piece of dirt gonna do you with no access to it, right? It's just something paying taxes on spending money on that you can't use. So there's those factors, as well as the fact that we've listed the lots for six months at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and received no activity. So that is a big reflect, I guess, that that number can't be.
Are you selling them as individual lots or as an entire parcel though?
As a parcel.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody can buy an individual lot in the middle of.
So I don't know that I agree with that, that taking that, whatever your cost is and dividing it out says that that's not what the value is.
Okay, so if you bought a piece of dirt, seven hundred feet from the main road, and it was part of one that's gonna require common driveway, an additional cost, and you didn't know when you were gonna build on it, what would you pay for it? Not a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Well, I guess, so my whole question of asking this is, I mean, I appreciate the qualifications, but this doesn't really matter that much. I mean, we just wanted to see the appraisal that's done, right? I mean, is, I guess, I'm just, so.
Once they have it completed.
So we have our appraisal, you know, your appraisal will.
So the deal was, I believe, and this was over a year ago, we talked about it, so I really brushed up on it, but that, at that meeting, you guys told Andy he can go get his appraisal.
Yep.
Or you guys could go get your appraisal.
Okay.
I think the way it was written in the verbiage was if you didn't agree, then you would have to figure out a third way to do it.
I think we even agreed to split the difference and Andy.
That may be what it's.
Didn't go get an appraisal.
He did not.
Which.
Fine.
So we're basically at, we have our appraisal, you're gonna get your appraisal, and we'll wait to review.
Well, when we contested the appraisal, you said you'll have the next lot to get another appraisal. You weren't gonna carry that appraisal through all three lots, you was gonna have to re-appraisal the next lot, which is.
Is that the case?
It wasn't, it wasn't gonna be an appraisal that carried through because, in fairness to either one, you guys could've said, oh, well, it's worth more now, it's been three years or two years.
So you got a lot in phase one?
It's a lot, it's an unapproved lot, it's the only place I have one to use.
I mean, I think at this point, we just need to wait for the appraisal, I mean, it's, we can go around in circles right now.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
I mean, but the difference is, this appraisal is gonna cost me like five grand as opposed to the five hundred you guys paid. When this guy does an appraisal, this is what he produces. It's substantial amount of work and it takes all the factors into it. And it'll all be written up, so.
Sounds good.
I mean, but don't worry about throwing money at something, if you guys are gonna say, well, no.
No, I'll definitely take that into account.
Yeah, I mean, it seems, I, I, so you were just giving this to us to kind of review and.
So it shows you that's the qualifications.
Okay.
To show those qualifications.
Yeah.
I mean, like Andy's cousin, licensed.
Correct, that's it, I'm just showing you the actual appraisal.
Right, like, they're licensed to some, I mean, as long as he's licensed, right, that's.
No, clearly, it looks like he's got good qualifications.
It also was just to show the form that they're moving forward on, that they're taking the action to.
I didn't just brush it under the carpet, I am.
Okay.
I'm doing a house outside of Andy here and I need to be able to get a CO on it, so. Trying to make it move forward.
You're building a house here now?
Yeah, I'm building it for somebody else.
Oh.
Yep.
And you and Andy are gonna be neighbors forever.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm moving into that, to help, I'm moving somewhere with sunshine eventually.
Just wake up and have coffee together.
I just need to move where it's warm, and there's no way I'm staying in Massachusetts.
Certainly not warm here right now.
You'd have plenty of heat if you moved into that neighborhood.
Thanks.
Alright, sounds good.
Alright.
See you later.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, sorry.
I just want, Chris Valenti, seventy-two Melton Road, I just wanted to ask the board, I hate to bring up something bad, but, what hap, what you said, if it does slip, what happens to all of us that live there in that neighborhood? Where do we stand? This was all supposed to be done last year, it didn't happen. You know, a lot of neighbors have come in, we've all expressed our concerns, and we just wanna know what's gonna happen if the schedule slips, if we all of a sudden see no activity in the middle of July with anything, what happens? Does anything happen? Is there anything that can happen?
I think everybody would just wanna stick this up their plea.
Well, I mean, I mean, it's a valid concern, I mean, I'd say, the sheet looks good and it looks like there's room in there if it's a slip or whatever, but.
I'm not really sure what a stick is, I mean, can we hold?
To make Andy build the road, not really, I mean, we have the bond, that would be really the second, I, the second option would be to then use the bond.
I mean, we'll have that bylaw in place that we could.
Yeah, but it still needs town meeting vote, it still needs a town meeting vote, so it wouldn't happen, the bond wouldn't happen until the year, in two thousand and twenty.
It's above that threshold.
The threshold's a hundred thousand, the bond for this is like two fifty.
Oh, okay, alright. Oh, so we'd have to go to the next town, yeah.
I mean, I mean.
I could ask a question.
I understand.
Yeah, I mean, it's about, you know, would Andy waive the homeowners' fees so that, you know.
I can't answer that.
Yeah, I know, you can, I just don't, I mean, it's a question and it is something that, you know.
I'm assuming the board has their rules and you guys have to follow them, but at the end of the day, it seems to be dragging on, you know. As a community, we just wanna make sure that at some point, is it, is it ever gonna end or will it actually finish? I'd like to think it is gonna.
I mean, we have a very detailed step-by-step process here, so we'll be able to see if things have fallen behind, you know. Let's hope that it gets up. To me, it seems like very needable, unless there's some type of disaster that comes along, but.
I mean, this might be a good point, but I do wanna point out that the board has been very amenable and accepting phases, which they didn't have to do. Nothing ever said that had to be accepted until the whole thing was done.
Right.
So, which, I'm glad we're doing it this way, it's nice and it's gonna work, but you guys didn't have to do that, so I don't really know what you can do if we don't finish it, I mean, we're gonna finish it, but.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I'm not really sure what we have as recourse, besides pulling bond, and that's not really something that we wanna do.
Then we can get it done and be quicker, so.
Right.
Right.
We just have to.
Totally good faith, right?
Yeah. I mean, we could pull bond, but the town doesn't wanna be, just like in another development, we don't wanna be responsible for, you know, constructing roads.
I mean, can we also just ask for some check-ins, you know, kind of throughout the summer, as we're kind of doing this, just to check, see how we're doing against the schedule, would that be?
I mean, we have two months until our site visit.
Yeah, I mean, not until we start, I mean, obviously, once you get started, not.
I'm assuming in the next two months, I'll have a contract in place for a lot of this stuff and be able to move forward.
Well, we're gonna meet on the twenty, April twenty-fourth, and the morning, we have a hearing actually that night, so we can have an update that night, because hopefully by April twenty-fourth, you would know if you do have them lined up by then.
Well, he'll be here at the end of March, right?
I'll be here at the end of March, yeah.
Yeah.
If I can get all the verbiage done with the lawyers and town council for.
Would you, would you have contractors lined up by the end of March?
All of them, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking, April, April probably would be a better one to touch base, see if you actually have. I'm sorry, contractors lined up.
Yeah.
Okay. So that might be another good, good meeting to show, to see how we're gonna start off with.
Anything would be good, a check-in, just to make sure, I mean, we could just as easily see a situation where the work starts and then it stops.
I mean, a risk, a risk, the big risk I see is that the residents and you guys don't get on the same page with an easement and that holds things up, so.
I agree.
That seems to be a big risk factor.
We had it lined up to be done last year and couldn't get it done because we couldn't figure out how to end the road.
So.
But now.
So what's, what's the process for getting that all written up and getting residents on board and?
Call Allen Chalka tomorrow, have him start drawing up the language and.
Because if that gets hung up between lawyers and you, I mean, that's probably to me.
That's the biggest risk.
That's the biggest risk.
But those residents did express interest in this plan, so.
Right, right.
And before, it was phase three, right, that was the whole lot.
Yeah, there was going into that, yeah.
It was going into phase three.
Yeah, there was not enough room for a cul-de-sac in the right way, if we're willing to do it this way, then.
Then it takes that out of the equation, yeah.
So just get that coming as soon as possible.
Call Allen in the morning, have him start drawing something up and then you don't have to send it to town council.
Yep. And one of the, one of those owners is selling their house now, so, so that could, like, do this as well, if we're having that, you go see the owner.
Yeah, yeah, that could slow things down if it's a two-month wait then.
Of course, it's not a perfect situation, but we're trying to do this, we can't get through it.
Alrighty.
Something else?
And pay, pay taxes.
Yes, I will tell him about that tomorrow.
Yes.
It's not my wheelhouse.
I understand.
I will mention.
I know, he's not here to talk about it.
No more incidents.
What'd you say?
No more incidents.
No more incidents. This week.
Alrighty.
Alright, good.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. So we have two, so is this like a subset or, why do we have two, two brackets here? We have the whole rules and regs.
Right, so I started to update the document, just to see a little copy of that, and then what I did was, I referenced back to Key's Farm and Tadmore to see what we had provided for waivers on those projects.
Oh, okay.
And I just listed them out, so that you could kind of see, you know, what we've been doing recently for waivers.
Okay.
So, do you wanna go through that list first or is this a good place to start?
Alright, so, let's see. So the meeting required drainage pipe and structure table of the board approved the waiver of subdivision regulations to all required information based on the street plan profile.
So, we've already, it's something that Fred Hamway recommends, we waived on both, both Keys and Tadmore. So now they just have to provide the information on the profile and not on a separate table, because what happens is changes to the table, changes to the intersection over time and then they don't get.
So it's just a documentation thing?
Yeah.
Remove the redundancy.
Redundancy, exactly.
Yeah, that's fine, so you already updated that?
I've already updated that and we can go through it when we go through the larger document. And then the second one is the soil survey plan, initially, we, when we had done the last revisions to the subdivision regulations, we were gonna require boring, but, with Keys and Tadmore, that's, that's been waived, and I, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be boring, I think that just test, test pits do.
So, so they're already doing tests for septic?
They've been doing test pits and we've been discussing the test pits.
And this was, this, this, this was for road specific, but.
Yeah.
Well, so hold on, um, oh, this is for the road design? We don't wanna leave it as boring or test holes?
New test holes, so you should test holes for some boring.
But could we say boring or test holes?
Oh, we could, we could, it's up to you, however you guys wanna.
And I only suggest that just because I've run into a lot of instances where it's site-specific, and if you have the room to do the test holes, great, but if you don't, if you have site constraints, a boring is much better and is less disturbance, so I would almost give them the option.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if there are.
Yeah.
Test pits everywhere and then they lay their road out on top of them, that's good, but if, yeah, but if they.
Well, just, I mean, if they end up doing, like, we're doing a road where it's a developed area where you can't really do a test hole.
Yeah.
They could do a boring.
Yeah.
We, we do borings all the time where you have the site constraints, so I would be okay with giving them an option.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so we can bring up that, and then number three, so we've waived the traffic study for the last two developments because they were smaller developments, but the one thing here that maybe we'll wanna consider is whether or not that hundred ADT should really be the trigger point for the traffic study, that seems relatively low.
I don't mind leaving it at a lower number, as long as the, the board can choose to ask for the study or not, just because if there is a sensitive, if there is a sensitive traffic area, like on Main Street or something, that we feel like, you know, we need to study.
I mean, a hundred ADTs is really low, I, I wouldn't, I would think you might wanna bump that up.
I mean, how many, how many, per, you know, per house do you, or per unit do you usually assume?
I mean, per unit, it's gonna be small, but I mean.
Well, how many units is a hundred ADT equate to?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's average daily trips, so it's, that's.
What is one house, what is the average daily trip per house, is it four, six?
Yeah, around that, I mean, it's really small.
So this is a twenty-five unit development?
I think a hundred and seventy was for Key's Farm, I think I pulled that from Key's, this actual bridge from Key's Farm, and it said, the board approved the waiver of the subdivision regulation where the proposed subdivision will be likely to produce an additional hundred and seventy ADT per.
So they said they would have a hundred and seventy, so.
And then we waived the having.
And that's eighteen.
Yeah, it was seventeen, we have eighteen.
So they're saying ten, basically, ten, ten trips per, per u, unit, so to speak.
I don't see that we need to change the number, I like to be able to have the choice of doing or not.
Why even have a number then, why don't we just?
I, I know, I just, if we're gonna waive it every time, I just feel like we should up it.
That's what we're trying to get out of, is having to essentially waive something every time we give an approval.
I mean, I guess, you know, you know, in Key's Farm, which is, well, good sightlines and such, I think, you know.
Right.
You know, it is very different from.
Something right on a bend.
Something right on a bend, right, you know, twenty lots right off of Main Street on a bend would be a, you know.
I mean, I think what we're really looking, I mean, the traffic study is, is going to be, you know, much more than just site distances and stuff.
Right, yeah.
And so where would we wanna really have that, I mean, that, obviously, any commercial business, I think, development, that would be along the issue, that's why we wanna trigger that. A residential subdivision that, I don't know, is meeting the site distance that we need to and stuff like that, I don't think that's gonna.
I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with actually taking the number out and just saying it's up to the board.
Yeah, I would prefer that.
I mean, I guess we don't need a number, that's fine, but I definitely, as a board, wanna have the ability, if it's in a sensitive traffic area, to ask for a study.
To require.
Yeah.
I mean.
Does it leave it as so, too vague though, if we don't have any number? Because then they're gonna be wondering, do I need to do a traffic study or not?
But it's part of the initial conversation with us, I guess.
Okay, or do the preliminary thing.
I know the preliminary thing.
And the wording should be something dependent on.
I mean, I could tie it to the preliminary and say the board will make this decision during.
The preliminary.
Submission.
Because we wouldn't do it before the preliminary anyways, so you'd wanna do it during the definitive.
The only thing, I guess, the only thing that could be problematic in having that language is if an applicant came forward and didn't wanna go through the preliminary, I mean, I can't imagine someone not, but they do have the option of going right to the definitive.
Oh, really? I thought they always had to do the preliminary.
You don't have to.
Well, then they risk, then they would just have to.
They risked of.
Of saying yes.
Or do it, just, yeah, exactly, prolonging that process, so.
Yeah, maybe tie it to the preliminary and say that.
Yeah, I mean, if we just put up, say, some bigger number, and it's a small development like Mark was saying, right, on some weird corner intersection and that, you know, maybe we would like to take a look at it, I would hate to lose the, the power to be able to do that.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I find this one different than a cross-section of a road or, you know, something that. Documentation.
I would imagine, like, Sugar Road, how many more units supposedly going in that area? And that's, that was, there's a lot of units in a.
Well, that would probably triggered.
Triggered.
Did that, was there a?
Well, that was a forty B.
It was forty B, so it didn't come before us, but.
Yeah, so then it wouldn't have.
I don't know, I mean, if you wanna take the number out, or, I don't know, what do you think?
I like tying it to preliminary, just make the board make the decision, and then that way we don't have to.
With no number?
With no number.
No number, and then that way, we're not waiving it every time.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, because I hate the idea of us always waving something.
So we, we shall request a traffic study based on.
Or we shall determine, we shall determine if a traffic study is needed at the preliminary.
Yes. Sounds good.
Next on the horizontal alignment, I think everything. And it's not just the last few, I think it's always waived.
What's this?
Road alignment, is this?
Oh, no, to have your horizontal vertical curve match is ridiculous, like it just doesn't.
Okay, so take it out.
So what is that exactly?
It's saying the, is that, that's what this is saying, right, subdivision requires wherever possible, set a line horizontal curve, points coincide with a set line of vertical curves. Yeah, it's saying the curves have to start and end at the same time, and that doesn't happen majority of the time, I mean, your vertical curve can be different completely from your horizontal curve.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I don't know what it means.
Oh, so, sorry, so your vertical curve is like going up and down, then your horizontal curve is now you're moving this way.
So you say you can't rise and bend at the same time?
What this is stating is where you have a vertical curve and a horizontal, they have to match.
Yeah.
And it doesn't, you actually, in some cases, don't want them to match in order for safety reasons, so it seems odd to have this in here, I would say we'd wanna take that out.
I think Fred at one point said this came out of some, some highway manuals.
Some highway manual?
Yeah.
And maybe for a highway.
Maybe, maybe, because they, but they have a lot more strict, they have a huge speed limit, so that they are playing with.
Yeah, but have we ever not waived this?
I don't know. Not the dive finger, but.
We've always waived it.
We've always waived it.
Yeah, so.
I would get rid of it, it, it's, it doesn't seem appropriate for our type of roads.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Oh, road width, this one.
Yeah, that doesn't affect, sorry.
What's that?
That doesn't affect drainage of any type or anything else like that, right?
No, they still have to, they still have to deal with all the drainage and they still have.
I don't know if that was in there because of, like, you know, would that affect?
No, because you still have to have your inlet spread analysis done and your catch reasons every so many feet, so that would be regardless.
Okay.
So what is, what a regular road is what, how many feet wide?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Okay.
Usually, you had two twelve foot.
Somebody's been waiving it, you know, Keys was twenty-two, Tadmore was twenty-one, I don't think we'd wanna go less than twenty-one, I think twenty-two potentially could be a number, but, I can have fired, I haven't reached out to them yet, but I can have fire department weigh in on that.
They don't.
I, I, I mean, in so much of it depends, I mean, for, for Century Mill, where you've got a lot more traffic, you'd want.
Something wider.
Something wider, whereas Tadmore, you can get away with some.
What is Century Mill?
There seems narrow, actually.
It's probably twenty-two.
I mean, is it that much more expensive to do two extra feet of probably pavement?
Two feet to hold with the road?
I would just say, I mean.
I mean, it's probably a good ten percent.
Yeah.
I would, you know.
I mean, twenty-four is standard.
So we would have that?
I, I would leave it at that and, and keep waiving it.
Well, why do we waive it, that's, I don't get that.
I mean, there are instances where I think it would be fine to have a twenty-two foot wide roadway, if it's, you, you've got a couple houses, I mean, it's a smaller subdivision, and you don't need that much, but, because it's less pavement. Would the fire department be okay with that?
Why don't I take a look at Century Mill State, see what the road. Why don't I take a look at Century Mill State, see what the road width on that is? Cause that's, we're not ever gonna get a subdivision larger than that, that's, I mean, that's a large subdivision. Uh, and then talk to the fire department, and we can make a final decision at the next meeting.
Okay.
If that works.
It would be interesting to get his opinion on this, he's outside of.
Well, how's it worded now? I mean, would say, you know, at least twenty-two feet unless.
This is forty foot right away and twenty-four foot pavement. We did approve twenty-two feet for Keys and Tadmore subdivision.
What pavement?
Um, twenty-seven.
No, yeah. So, so that is just the, the minimum, yeah.
Yeah, they can always go bigger.
But they never do.
I mean, that's one of those, I wouldn't mind keeping it twenty-four feet, cause it's a standard road width, and then allowing a waiver if they come in showing um, that it can work with twenty-two. I mean, I always like less pavement, that's always cool, but, um.
I mean, it seems the only reason we need twenty-four is for emergency access, right? So why don't we have fire department at least weigh in, and then go in there.
Way in, and see if they'd be, cause if they'd be okay with twenty-two?
If they're okay with twenty-two, I'm okay with twenty-two.
Yeah, then, then let's reduce it.
Okay.
I mean, it's twenty-four, this seems wide for most subdivisions. You're not moving too fast. Right, but I'm not, yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure what Century Mill has, but I'm not sure I'd wanna go much narrower for, you know, a bigger division, subdivision like that. Yeah. And see what the fire department says.
Century Mill feels narrow to me, I, I don't know why. I've been really curious how wide that is.
I, I assume, like, Kettle Hole and Fox Run, those are all twenty-four, probably.
I can take a look, I have all the plans around, so I can take a look and kinda give you a little table of what we've.
Check, yeah, check Nashway, I love Nashway.
Nashway?
I go walking on Nashway, it's, it's so wide.
All right.
Nashway, Northwoods.
Nashway, Northwoods, C and E, and Fox Run.
Sure.
All right, that'll give us a starting with that. Cause we already know if they have more Keys, so.
Yeah. So this is the whole dead-end driveway.
Yes, and the length of the, of the cul-de-sac, we've been waiving it, and I take, it's funny, I was looking at Rocky Den B the other day, for some other reason, and I just happened to notice in the plan that it's around sixteen hundred feet long, and they had provided a waiver on that one, and that was permitted late nineties, early two thousands, so this isn't something new that they've been leaving.
That street's crazy.
I'm fine with increasing it, maybe we'll just talk to the fire department.
Yeah, that's another way, if you can talk, try to run on both of those.
We require a fire system, so I'm not sure why we would limit it to only five hundred if we have a fire system, but, you know. Okay, I'll talk to the fire department.
I mean, it makes sense to have that boundary without the fire system by law, but not to have that.
Yeah.
It's not probably really even necessary at all.
So we could potentially take that out, is there?
Yeah, I mean, unless there's some other safety.
I mean, I would just talk to the fire department, see if they do have a maximum length, if they, even with a fire system, that they would be okay with.
Well, we already have, the houses needs to be within a thousand feet.
Yes, that's based on that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so if it's not, you have, so say that it's, like, someone wants to do a two thousand foot.
And then maybe they need two systems.
And at some point, the fire department may say it takes, I don't know, like, if you don't have an inlet and outlet, you need to go all the way in and then all the way back out. I don't know if that plays in or not, so.
Yeah, it just, it might, I mean, you could put the system on the middle, and then that would cover that.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of feels like a tree that falls, or, I mean, it's just more, the longer it is, the more you can isolate it, I guess, yeah.
I would just ask them if they have a distance that they would prefer, prefer not, as, enough to go.
But not five hundred.
Yeah.
So on the next one, you could just go with our new?
Yeah, that, I updated that already, that's in there.
So it's just the circle, going from one twenty with a center island to one hundred without?
Yeah. Oh, actually, why don't we just go to that page and take a look at it? Because I think they provided two options, I didn't actually take out the other requirement, in case the developer from Ford and wanted to do the island. Uh, I, I, so there's both now. It's on page twenty-eight.
So you put both in there?
I did.
Yeah, I was actually just thinking that. To not preclude somebody from doing a center island if they wanted to.
So I have it labeled as dead-end streets with cul-de-sac islands, and then another section, dead-end streets with household track, and they can choose.
Twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
And when I come to you, the one.
Do, do they choose, or does, does the board get to decide based on the site, or whatever?
Um, I don't have, I don't specify what, you know, which. What I'll also do to you is reach out to DPW again, and make sure that they're comfortable with the dimensions for the dead-end with an island. To make sure that they can plow that. Does the board wanna have a preference, or do you wanna?
Well, should we say that it's our choice, or is it two of ours?
Do we have one built yet without the island? Tadmore and Keys Farm, are they gonna be the first ones that?
There's no island at Keys Farm.
Yeah, right, we know. I'm asking if.
But it's, but it's not built yet, so.
It's not built, right?
Just to see what.
I wanna see what it looks like.
I don't know if there is.
Is there a binder down at Tadmore?
Tadmore, yes, there is binder down, so you could drive down there, and I guess sort of get to get one.
Can we just, just drive in there, or does construction say?
Um, if you bite, if you feel more comfortable, I'm happy to drive in and take some pictures.
I don't think that, I, I mean, I drive by it all the time, but it's, I think you can drive, I didn't see any.
I mean, they're, it's not really active right now, they haven't submitted for building.
Well, cause of the weather, they're probably not doing too much.
If somebody stops you, just say, do you know who I am?
Get your head out.
Who are you?
Find everybody.
Do you know who?
I'm Martha Remington.
No, you're planning board.
Martha Remington is a bigger name than planning board.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, I, I was thinking I was coming to the Still River Commons. I guess that was last night, right?
No, that's next week.
Oh, great.
You haven't missed it.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, if there's something that we wanted to preserve that was in, you know, in, in a cul-de-sac area, you know, you know, we might wanna have the choice to keep them from bulldozing out. Or, or if there's a historic artifact there that we want preserved, that the developer may, may say it's just as easy to plow it all under and move on. You know, that's the only, you know, the board might wanna, might wanna retain the, uh, yeah. At our option. Option agreed upon by the. By the board or something like that.
It would be nice for us to have some say in it, I guess.
Yeah, cause, I don't know, for whatever reason, outside the circle, there isn't any spots to, the plowing situation's different, and DPW prefers one way versus the other.
Martha Remington, historical commission. I think the reason that Keys Farm moderator waived was going to be a cul-de-sac was because the fire company said they didn't want a circle at the end of the loop. And it makes it so much nicer if there is a buffer there, rather than just a lot of impervious surface. I think the fire department, or, or wasn't the DPW who wanted it to be plowed, like, easier to plow.
So it's, it's less impervious service.
It's less pavement, it's less, less pavement.
It's less pavement when there is no island, so it's always a cul-de-sac. The question is whether there is an island in the middle of the cul-de-sac or not.
I, I'm sorry, I dispute that. If there is an island, it's less pervious than if you have no island and it's all macadamia.
The circle needs to be wider if you have an island in it.
Well, those subcontractors are totally, uh.
That's, I mean, that's just math. The circle needs to be wider if you have an island in it, and so if it's wider, it's more.
But I thought it was for the fire truck rather than the plow people. The plow people are all subcontractors, and they have no respect for anything on our roads and intersections. That's just the way it is.
Regardless, could we just put wording in that will allow us to kinda have the final say on which way we go? Erica?
Yeah, yep, I'll add a sec, I'll add a, one more sentence, part A.
And the islands provide room for birds and small animals, too.
I mean.
I can say something like the planning board shall have final approval, approval whether the dead-end shall have a cul-de-sac island or not, or something like that.
Because, I mean, Tadmore might look terrible when we see it.
But aren't they, excuse me?
And then we'll be like, Martha was right.
Aren't they going to have an island at Tadmore?
No, no.
Oh, no, really? Well.
Oh, Tadmore.
And then with the reduction of pavement.
So, okay, next. Lighting at the end of the cul-de-sac.
So these are ones that, these are already been incorporated, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they're already.
Okay.
So nine's fine, ten is. Or else, that would that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is just allowing them to do the IM rods from the open space.
Yeah.
And for Keys Farm, these were just specific, I felt were sufficient for that subdivision, but I thought it was good for the board to see it.
So you're saying we should not be allowing this, we should have kept it at six hundred feet?
I think it's fine, but I, I think six hundred would be the.
Well, that's so we don't have a whole new road.
Yeah.
I think it's just a, a more recommended length. Like, when I go out there now and I see how close Keys Farm is to Danforth, now I kinda can visualize what six hundred feet would do, and I'm like, oh, well, maybe that six hundred feet would have been better.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I think, you know, it's worth keeping that.
Yep.
Okay.
I think number eleven, too, you wanna keep, the only time we would allow that waiver is if they don't have an uncover.
Right.
Let's leave it, that's it.
I think those are pretty straightforward, that we shouldn't beat, that's, those are the options.
And exactly, I think if they can design to twelve inch with RCP and three feet of cover, that's what they should be doing. If they can't, we'll take it on a case by case basis.
So the next two, I think, are worth looking at.
So what are you saying, eight and one A? So if we're gonna utilize trees that are currently there, then you'd use twelve inches or greater?
Yeah, I, I was actually gonna even go to fourteen inches, just to be consistent with some other regulations, but twelve inches is fine.
Whenever, you know, whatever the board thinks, I just.
I mean, MIBA requires fourteen inches, but if you wanna use twelve of them, that's fine.
So all trees twelve inches or greater need to be shown in the plans in the right of way? This is, this doesn't have to do with shade trees, it's just what needs to be shown on the plan?
All right, so change it to twelve or fourteen?
I mean, if you wanna be consistent with MIBA regulations, it's fourteen inches. That's when, that's when they trigger, if you take down more than five public shade trees within the right of way, and are fourteen inches or greater, their permit gets triggered. So it's just. It doesn't have to match with them, it's just a point of notation.
I believe the eight inch came from our tree warden at the time when we were doing the last round of revisions. I, I think we had asked him what he thought was a significant sized tree, and I think he had said eight, so we put in eight.
So is Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can check that.
Yeah, do a check with him, yeah. Martha?
Mr. Moderator, Martha Remington, historical commission. I remember when Jody Ross was our town administrator, and she had agreed that planning board would include uh, larger caliper trees along the frontage to be included on all plans from the initial drawings. So that they just weren't arbitrarily clear-cut to the road.
Yeah, that's what we're talking here, we're just deciding, deciding what diameter trees should be.
Yeah, so that will still be required, it's, the question is, what size do you start flagging it at? I think it's at least twelve, but I'm sure that tree warden case would not be disappointed if it were fourteen. You know, because when things are clear-cut, that's it, there's no more trees, so, thank you. I'm okay with either twelve or fourteen.
Yeah, let's see what Mark has to say.
Okay.
If they're healthy trees.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the reg right now is eight inches, so, but we, but we waive it.
A lot, yeah.
A lot, so.
The storm we had this week, there were fifteen inch trees that were just.
Yeah.
Broken off. I, I think three to one is okay. Ted, sorry, are we on two A?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I mean, we grade things all the time at three to one, that's an acceptable slope, so.
All right, so I will incorporate that one.
Yeah.
And then the last one is very specific to Tadmore because of the width of their road, so that doesn't really apply. We did have a resident, Jake Foot, who lives off of Century Mill Road, he'd come to some of the hearings for, um, like, the, the address for that common driveway that got completed in Tulane on Century Mill Road.
Okay.
And he had asked, I had jotted down, he had recommended some revisions to the, to the regulations, so I included those in the, in the list as well. He wanted to be part of this discussion, so what I'll do is I'll reach out to him before the public hearing, and to see if he can attend the hearing and be part of that discussion.
He's saying increase the gravel base for roadways to twenty-four inches? I'd say that's a bit excessive. I mean, I don't mind on a case by case basis, you know, if the soils are saying it's, it needs to be, that, that's a lot.
He's a civil engineer, so that's.
What are we requiring?
For what that's worth, you know, that's why I.
Is, is required twelve?
What's that?
What's the requirement, is it twelve?
It's either eight or twelve.
I mean, I'd be willing, if it's eight, to bump it up to twelve, um.
What is a, a right, a regular public road base?
It, it's, it varies, but it can be anywhere from eight to twelve inches, that's, that's normal. Yeah, I mean, usually, you've, you've got four to five inches between your top coat and binder, eight to twelve inches of, um, base. So twenty-four inches is significant, I mean, that's doubling your requirement. Um, and the only areas where I've seen that really need to be done is where you have really poor soils, either a lot of heat, you need, you know, you're gonna have settling issues, so you want that extra gravel.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're, we're, if there's a very high water table.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely issues where you could modify it, but if you have a decent soil base and it's fine, I mean, there's no reason twelve inches isn't fine.
Granite curbing throughout the barn, that would make sense to me, I mean.
That one I actually wouldn't, I mean.
Why is it, I mean, sometimes it just seems very institutional.
You mean, instead of berm?
Yeah.
I, I'm not a fan of berm.
I know, but.
It's wrecked, it's, it's, it's just.
I mean, look at the arguments we're having.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think, I think that one I'd be in favor of.
It's not a subdivision, like, I don't know, it seems like it's very institutional to have, like, granite curbs, so. Well, it's actually.
It's, the maintenance is. It's, the maintenance is a thousandfold less. It looks a lot better.
It doesn't seem as country. I don't know. I don't know, is it going...
Yeah, but the, the berm gets wrecked within, like, a year or two, and it looks awful.
I mean, one of the only reasons that we allowed Tadmore to reduce the width of the road was the Cape Cod berm so that trucks and cars could pull up onto it.
I mean, I, I would definitely be in favor of granite curb.
I like granite curb myself.
Yeah, it's, there's, I know it's more expensive, but it looks a lot better. The maintenance is 10 times better, lasts.
It varies how much it adds to projects.
Versus Cape, or versus...
Berm, yeah.
It adds a fair amount.
Because who's responsible for repairing the berm once it's signed over to the town?
Yeah, then it's the town responsible. So maintenance-wise, I mean, it's much better to get the granite in there, and the towns aren't going to have that maintenance. But it is a definite significant cost increase to, to make that change. But I'd be in favor of that.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. One example of Cape Cod berm opposed to granite is in front of Pan Cemetery on 117. That berm is next to nothing, but if it had been a granite curb, it would have been much more sightly and less destroyed.
I, I think aesthetically pleasing is a thousandfold better, but that's, again, just my personal opinion. I just don't, not a fan of Cape Cod. Um, I have to...
What, what does DPW have to say about granite versus...
I'm sure they would...
Well, they, they want it for the cul-de-sacs, they require it.
I'm sure that they would absolutely want granite.
So they require it.
Because when they hit stuff with the plows and everything, I mean...
Yeah, I didn't know if the plow would be hard, if the granite would be harder on the plows.
Yeah.
I can reach out to Joe. I think at one time he had told me that, he referred to granite, but I'll, I'll ask him.
At cul-de-sacs, for sure, he definitely said that.
Yeah, any exceptions on granite?
All right, I think, I think, I gotta get them.
Yeah, just, granite just seems like a bit much, seems like an over the time.
A lot of towns, a lot of towns require granite. That's, it's a standard requirement.
Concord requires granite.
Okay.
A lot of, a lot of towns, it's just their standard.
Right, I mean, we don't, we don't have curbs in most of the roads because they're too narrow, and you would just be constantly...
Well, and you're, and you're allowing sheet flow, and that's what they do now, so you don't want to put a whole drainage system in there to curb it and everything. And it's not like we couldn't waive it. I mean, you could change it, and then if there was an instance where it just, whatever.
I mean, they would, if, they would always ask to waive that one just because of the costs.
Yeah, then I wouldn't.
Yeah. We'd do it or don't.
I'd say two.
Just do your favorite Nancy impression and just say no.
Yep. It is back to the gravel, it's 12, we require 12.
Okay, I would keep it at 12. I, my recommendation would, 24, it can be needed at certain sites, I totally get that, I'm not disputing that, but to say across the board it needs to be 24 inches?
Was there a specific reason for that?
Um, he had said that they just want it longer.
If he had given us, yeah, if he had given us like a write-up or something...
Yeah, I'm sure he won't be happy to come and explain why he made that recommendation, but I think essentially he had said that, you know, based on the ones that he had seen with 24 inches, they lost significantly longer.
He's got a point, I'm sure.
He said, you know, why not pass that on to the developer versus the town having to fix roads as often, kind of thing.
So on your way out to Darty?
Yes.
Are you okay presenting articles number two?
Which one, the articles one and two?
Your articles.
Oh, the square one, and two is...
Anybody else who just referred questions to you, so...
Yeah, that's fine. I don't even know what number two, what is number two? Is it the same thing, common driveway?
Common driveway.
Yes, both strong lines.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Where did he go? Is he inside? Yes, that's fine. I think they wanted to. Um, anything else before I... Write his switcher, please. All right.
So, what we need to do here, finalize, is there any changes that we need to look at?
Uh, yes.
Number two there is, just a summary.
So our, our next meeting will be, will finalize the...
Probably in two meetings, by the time I get to Aberdax, because it needs to be a public hearing.
Okay.
Good night.
All right, excuse me.
Good night, Danielle.
All right, all right, good night.
So you changed from the common driveway in the house...
Yeah, the edits are...
Work area.
...a very minor space, if I may add.
Did you change that, uh... Did you change the yes to special permit?
Yep.
Forget what else you had to change.
Well, that, and then I think it was just the number of work areas for the main driveway.
Yeah, that's all.
I think that was really it. And then the ones that are highlighted now are just new things that are updated. And then also in your packet, I, I had a draft of the zoning map and a potential of some presentation slides for the zoning district changes. So as far as the overall zoning map goes, we are doing it, I'm doing it in-house, instead of having you term of delists do this. So I'm transitioning it into GIS. I've done the updates to the zoning districts. I still need to do, obviously, like, the legend and the scale, and then I need to start incorporating the overlays back in.
Did you hear back from, like, the residents of 3C 23, or that piece of them?
Lamson? Uh, no, I'm not, no.
They got, they got noticed, though?
Uh, yes, yeah, everyone got noticed that will be impacted. Uh, one thing I did notice when I was looking at the overlays, um, if you look at the wireless communication overlay district, and you look at the bylaw for it, it has, it calls out certain areas where basically cell towers can go, and one of them is in all of our commercial and industrial districts. So that's going to impact the overlay lines for that district.
I actually need to clean that up, too.
Yeah, so that, I just need to...
The cell tower isn't on, it's on the industrial land, right?
No, it's, it could be in any of the commercial...
Yeah, but where is it now, the one on the highway?
Uh, we have a, we have several. So one's on Fort Bush, one's right by 495, one's at Paragon, um, there, we have quite a few.
But I guess there are, are they all, we're not taking them out of an industrial or a commercial zone?
Um, no, 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 no.
Yeah.
No.
You're just saying they're not currently in compliance with the reg? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's like an overlap.
So actually, that, I put, I put the bylaw in your, your packet so you could read it, so it's on the...
The blue highlighted?
Yeah, the blue highlighted, it just, it essentially calls out all of, all of the commercial districts. So, um, if you look at the, I also included a copy of our current zoning map in your packet. And you'll see on that plan, um, in the legend, it calls out the, the wireless communication overlay district. It's basically just a red thick line.
Yep, I see it.
So, that'll have to get updated to match, you know, the proposed changes.
Who's the one, is that the camp? That's the camp one? This one? Oh, yeah, it's the Girl Scout camp.
Yeah. Is there a tower there?
Yeah, there is.
But they're retaining for income for themselves, that tower.
It's good money.
So my only concern with this is the fact that I didn't include that in the advertisement for the hearing, and right now it's not in the write-up for the article, so that might, I, I may need to talk to Town Council about how that gets modified.
So what if we do nothing?
Uh, well, then the bylaw, I mean, the map isn't going to match what's stated in the bylaw.
But I guess what, what I'm saying is, so some, some of what is in the WCOD will be residential, not business?
Right.
Which, oh, the back, the back, along 495, because that's going to be cut down. But what, so the WCD, so it's in the Girl Scout camp?
So it says, um, the overlay district consists of the residential zoning districts specifically provide conformance with the ag business use.
Say that again?
There's, um, so there's several different locations that a, that a tower can go, so it's, it can go in the commercial and industrial districts, then there's, um, certain specific parcels that, that the bylaw calls out, like 41 Main Street, 96 Seton Road, Main Street, Fort Bushnell Road. And then it talks about properties that are in the ag business, that have ag business uses.
So the only place we could get into trouble is where we, uh, where we turn industrial into residential? Right?
Yeah, I mean, you should check with Town Council. I think, I mean, this just says, I, I read this that it's just going along with whatever, whatever's in the zone, so if the zone's changed, if we, you know, rezone some residential area into commercial, that automatically can incorporate it. Yeah, because it's not saying...
Yeah, no, that's why I read the bylaw, it's just the fact that we're... I don't know, I think it's...
Whether we need to set another article to, or whether we can modify the base map article to include modifying the lines for the...
That's basically my question.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I feel like that's something that residents should know about, that we are modifying those lines where a cell tower could potentially go.
But I think we're, we'd be decreasing it, really. Well, it's kind of wash. Yeah. Some areas gets increased, some areas, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're going to check with Town Council on it?
Yeah, I'll talk to Don and see what he thinks, if it...
It's a minor, such a minor thing.
I know, it's a minor thing, but...
It's the same tweaks around the edges, not like we're adding a new business somewhere else, I mean, you know, a cell tower could pop up next to somebody, you know?
Yeah, I mean, really, the only parcel that I would even think could have an issue would be like that Lamson property or the property right next to 495. That Lamson property doesn't have frontage, so I don't even know if that's a buildable. I don't know, grandfather, I don't know enough about it.
Well, I mean, you've sent messages multiple times and they haven't responded, so...
Is there a street number for that? Excuse me?
No, there's no street number. It's, um...
Southern north of 49 of 117.
Yeah, it's 3C 23 is the parcel number.
But what's the address?
It doesn't have one, it's Main Street.
Well, you know, to most citizens, parcel numbers and lots mean nothing. We need to have street numbers.
It's just land in the middle.
There is a street, there is a street.
So where is this? On 117?
Southern 117, west of 495, along 495, this is some land in the middle there. That's going to go from industrial to residential.
Not, not between Sugar and 495?
No, no, this is, uh, limited businesses that go residential, sorry.
Is it between the country covered from 495?
I can tell you, Martha, it's, it's right behind the town property that has the wastewater treatment facility on it. It's behind there.
Kind of, but behind the lacrosse fields or the cell tower, back in that area. Yeah, it, it has, it has no address, so it's kind of hard to...
Right.
Everything has an address, except it may not be a structure or something. But even vacant lots should have a, a reference for an address between buildings.
Martha has a question.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question as a private citizen. Down at the Stowe line between Delaney and the discontinued street on the south side of 117, between Paragon and the Stowe-Bolton border. There's an area that when 117 was finally redone, I think in the early 2000s, it was delayed so much by the big dig. And it's near the commercial areas that are for sale from Bolton Woods Way down to 117. There's an area there where there's a pond for at least three, if not six, months a year that should have had a culvert that went under 117 and eventually drained down to the Delaney area. If that pond is not released of the water, all of the trees on the south side of 117, between 117 and Bolton Woods Way, are going to die. And they never addressed that when they redid 117. So I just wanted to point that out. It's a nice wooded area between the boundary of Stowe and Bolton Woods Way road.
So it's something of our case, or the...
It's, it's before the, uh, the two areas that are for sale now across from Paragon.
Yeah, no, I, I know what you're talking about, and I think I've seen that it's wet there, but, um...
Well, it's not wetland. It's only wetland...
I said it's wet in there.
Yeah, it's wet in there because they never allowed a culvert to go underneath 117 to let it drain out toward the old road, the old road bed for 117.
You should, you should talk to Joe about it, DPW Director, right?
Yeah.
Well, but the point is, if the road was changed or if that...
The road's not being changed. Nothing's being changed with the road.
If a culvert, if a culvert were allowed, the Planning Board would have nothing to do with it?
I don't think so. Uh, let's talk to Joe.
Because I'm going to be speaking with conservation about it.
Yeah, do it.
And, I mean, it's been that way for at least 10 years, and if it's dry for at least four months a year, the trees may not die.
So, three, sorry, Martha, I just want to move on. It's not us, we can't do anything about it. Three, four, five, six, seven are all done. I'll present those, I guess.
The thing is, there should be a coordination between Conservation and Planning Board and DPW so that, you know, it's not, oh, that's DPW's problem.
DPW handles all the culverts in the town.
But it's only the Conservation Commission and perhaps Planning Board that can allow these things to happen.
I don't think we have any zoning law that would prevent any... Where we work there.
Culvert I've ever seen has gone through DPW.
Yeah, yeah.
It might work with Conservation, but...
Okay, well, I just wanted to mention it. I mean, some of you have seen it, and the trees are alive now, but, see, the old road bed for 117 was north of the current 117, to Delaney, down to ETL and Stowe, so...
All right.
Thank you.
No problem.
And there was an historic house there, but not anymore.
So I'll, I'll do the business ones, three through eight. I mean, does somebody want to come up just to do a sign one, or should I do that as well?
Switch the politicals?
Yeah.
I'll do that.
Sounds good. I mean, it makes sense for, you know, most of this three through eight are kind of, they're all tied together, so it doesn't make sense to switch up.
So Eric, do you want me to keep working on, I mean, do you like this?
Yeah, it looks great. I don't want, I want to have it, like, minimal talking and slides as possible.
I figure, really, this is probably the only article that'll have slides.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So...
Just so people can...
And there's only, there's only three here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm not going to have any bullet points, I don't think. I just want to, I don't want to be up there for an hour and a half again. I think, uh, just get in and out as fast as possible. I can't imagine major consternation over a bunch of what we're doing here. There'll probably be, there'll be a few people involved.
Like Martha.
Sorry.
You're on your team Planning Board. I'm not worried about you, Martha.
Eric, can I update it at Fort Bush, um, Geodes property?
I saw that, yeah.
So I have the, the revised property line in there, even though it's not in a suburbs yet.
Yeah, I saw that, it was good.
Okay. And then just let me know if, if you... Okay. And then just let me know if you need any other changes to these.
Yeah, no, it's good.
I thought about hatching out the areas that change, but then I thought, well, that'd get pretty messy.
Yeah, no, this is good. So this will present side by side on up there, it's fine.
Yeah, and then I also did a quick table of, um, the acreages that changed on the parcels between.
Oh, yeah.
These existing districts.
Uh.
In case that comes up.
Yeah, I don't think I wanna show this, though.
No, but in case it comes up or someone has a question, we'll have that data.
Yeah, that'll be good to have.
Because it came up during the hearing, so I figured we should have these numbers handy.
I think it's just be like, I feel like too much information sometimes. Like, it's good to have, but.
It's good to have because I want it to look like the planning board, obviously.
For sure.
Has done their research and.
Is it possible to have them have a slide queued up but not presented? Probably not.
I wouldn't even do it as a slide. If they had asked, we could just call it out.
Just call out the numbers. Yeah, okay, that's good.
This is really just for the planning board.
Because I, I've had a couple people talk to me about, um, Bolton Capital, so they might want that number. But then we could say, give it back 27 acres to residential in there. No, it's 3C 23.
Now, if I had that lot line on Chiota, is that, should you put it on the current zoning?
Um.
Portion of it?
Question.
So that, I mean, if, because now it's kind of looking like, oh, well, where did this line? I could see a question being raised, where did this line come from?
Right, um.
Would it be, would it, would it hurt to put it on the current?
Yeah, true, because we're not changing the lot line. Maybe just put that line on the left side too.
Okay, yeah, I'll add that line, that'd be different.
Okay, so yeah, Danielle will do those, I'll do these, and then you'll do political signs.
Do you want a slide for the overall map, zoning map, or just these? I think just these. You can't really see much from the overall, from a distance.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's good.
And then just one other thing I wanted to clarify with the board too, for the properties around 495, the town property with the waste volcano facility, during our initial discussions, we talked about this, keeping the district line, um, going straight down and not following the parcel line. So I wanted to just go back to that, because I ended up following the parcel.
On the highway, you said?
Um, over by where the community gardens are. We weren't gonna include that, we were just gonna keep.
Oh, I see.
Under current zoning, how it goes straight down.
Yep.
It looked funky. And since the whole point of this was to not have split zoning in parcels, I incorporated the whole parcel, but I.
So where exactly is the garden?
Uh, the gardens are somewhere over here.
In the area.
That's definitive.
Yeah, well, um, is that like a conservation restricted area?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Uh. I don't know. Do we, I don't know if we ruffle feathers if we get the business zone.
I can very easily change it back to the straight line, so.
How, how did you look before?
Just went straight down.
Oh, because that area has the garden and, then like, people might be worried they might lose the garden or something, you know?
I mean, I mean, it's a little, it, it's kind of a moot point where it's town land.
Oh, it's town land, that's true, but.
It's a moot point, I just was trying to make the map look as clean as possible.
No, to look as clean as possible, not, not look as clean as possible, right? You want it to look as clean as possible.
Okay, whatever. Yes. Um, I'm just, I don't wanna scare, like, I don't wanna like have it be an issue like, oh, they're trying to take our garden or something. That's all I'm thinking.
Yeah.
So maybe.
I'll change it, I'll change it.
Just change it back to the residential. I know what you're saying, and I agree, and it's town land, but it might get a few people worried.
Is there a reason not to just take that whole parcel back out and maybe take it and go residential?
We can do that, yeah.
Well, we talked about. Does this go back there? I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not sure it's even buildable. Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a buildable land, it doesn't matter what, some of the.
Well, I mean, what if we want, because we have solar panels over there, right? We have this, we have like solar panels, right? So I think just leave it how you have it. Don't peel it all the way back, just.
Okay.
Just, just, just leave the line there.
And Boris Lefkman may have an opinion on it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I say just, just leave it where it is, because then you have solar panels or, I would love to someday have the DPW garage hidden back there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and get, get that corner back, so just leave it, leave it as well.
Okay, I will do that.
Yeah.
I think that was it, right?
Yeah. Yes. So we have January 23rd and February 19th.
Are we meeting this?
Yeah.
Maybe we approve the minutes for January 23rd, 19, and February 13th, 19?
Second.
On favor?
I, I. What is it?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Yes, Martha?
Outside of your agenda for this evening, are you gentlemen on the planning board aware of the flooding which has occurred from the tower between 495 and the community gardens that comes out next to the, uh, field, the athletic field across from Central Clinton Savings Bank? It's, it's where Great Burke goes in back of Bolton Office Park, down to 495, goes under the road, under 495, and continues east. Are you aware of the severe flooding that's happened there? I, I, I think it's zoned residential, but, um, there's a driveway that goes to the cell tower. Forget it. Two feet of water there.
Yeah.
Um.
All right, can we, sorry.
I'm just bringing it up.
We can talk more after.
Because if you don't live over there and see it often, you don't notice when that is totally impassable.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
We can talk more after, but it's not really.
Well, I, I'm just.